I'd like to call the November the eighth, twenty twenty one special call of City Council meeting for the city of Lake City. If everyone was standing for the budget of the lead, please stand up for the advocate. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We ask for your guidance and the high deliberations that is pleasing in your eyes and for the betterment of our community. We ask for you to continue to look after our community and the entire world to get over this pandemic and to look after our first responders and our law enforcement and our troops. And in your name we pray. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened a public meeting since nineteen sixty eight. City code has prohibited any person from making personal or impertinent or slanderous remarks or calling vultures while addressing the city council, yelling or making audible comments with all these hot speech words of conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There's only one or two manner of addressing the city council. It has to be recognized and it speaks from the podium. I want to ask everybody tonight that the audience does not make comments, does not make outbursts, and when the people's names called or you're recognized and you speak from the podium. And we are going to stay within three minutes. We've got a lot of people speaking tonight. If we go past it on any, then everybody's going to want it. Now, we only have one issue tonight, so we're under public comments. Everybody's going to speak. And within the three minutes. So you're going to speak one time. We're going to go through this whole, there's a whole group of people that's wanting to speak. So I'd ask everybody to bear with us and be considerate of everybody else. Ms. Sikes, we've called the rock.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Cobreline?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Chief Butler?
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda.
Some movement. Say.
Make sure Senator approve the agenda as published. All of them say aye.
Aye.
President's wishing to address council. Like I said, we're going to take it one at a time. There's a lot of people wanting to speak. The first one I have is Mario Copic.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mario Copic. I live at six eight six Northwest Long Street, Lake City, Florida. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Ricky Jernigan. I want you guys to know that he asked me to do this, and I consider it to be a profound honor to speak on his behalf. Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Sampson, Ms. Sykes, Mayor Witt, Councilman Hill, and Mr. Cobreline. Good to see you again, Mr. Cobreline. Still, what are you doing? Mr. Jernigan was born and raised in Lake City. He attended the public schools of our county and graduated from Columbia High with the class of nineteen seventy nine. He played varsity football and basketball and was selected to the conference, Gateway Conference, as an all-star in both sports. Now, that's very rare because he did it in the same year. The Gateway Conference consisted of fifteen schools, including Raines, Terry Parker, Reebok, Wilson, Santa Wood, Fletcher, and so on. Lake City Columbia was the only school not from Jacksonville. Needless to say, having coaches and athletic directors pick a kid from Lake City was outstanding, and it certainly showed how good Ricky was in his athletic endeavors. To this day, no other athlete at Columbia High had received such distinction. Upon graduation, he enlisted in the US Army, was honorably discharged. After his distinguished service to our country, he returned to Lake City and continued his education at Lake City Community College, now Florida Gateway. He was a standout member of the Lake City Community College Timber Wolf. Many of you remember the Timber Wolves back in the day that were the outstanding team throughout the state of Florida. He was coached by head coach Tony Johnson. After college, he spent the next thirty-eight years serving with the Department of Corrections and rose to the rank of captain until he retired in August of this year. Mr. Jernigan has demonstrated a career of service, service to his family, service to his country, service to the state of Florida, and lastly, service to his community. He has run for the very office three times, each time finishing closer than the time before. The last time, he was the runner-up to the gentleman you are seeking to replace. I think he should be recognized and rewarded for his dedication to serve the citizens of his precinct. I strongly believe he should be appointed to this position simply based on the next way enough principle. No one can question his earnest desire to hold this distinguished office. His record of service is unparalleled. I'd like to leave you with a lesson I learned when faced with the difficult ruling as you guys have tonight. I worked thirty-five years as a high school and college basketball official. Our mantra was, "It's not who's right, but what's right." Pointing Mr. Jernigan is what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Geraldine Ellison.
Good evening. My name is Geraldine Ellison, and I'm here in support of Ricky Jernigan. I want to make it short and sweet. I know a lot of times we look at quantitative hate of measures where we're looking at people, but I think we need to look at quality. When you know people who are well-known in the community, not because they have a list of acronyms behind their name, or because they're associated with certain boards, but they are really involved in the community. I think that speaks volumes, and I think that we need to really get down to basics, get back to basics, understanding that people who have, excuse me, genuine concerns for our community, a genuine connection with people in our community, those people should really be acknowledged. And I think that we need to really get back to that. Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alina Hoshin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alina Holler. I have resided at eighteen twenty-three, Southwest Judy Glen, for twenty-six years. Ricky Jernigan is my brother. We was raised by parents that were honest, hardworking, dependable, genuine, giving, and trustworthy. That's the way that we were raised by Emma Lee and Henry Lee Jernigan, Sr. If Ricky is given the opportunity to represent District fourteen, I know for a fact that he would be, it would be his first priority. Every job that he has had has been, he has been very dedicated to. He was employed for thirty-eight years by the Department of Corrections, and he represented them very well. Every conversation that he had when it came to him doing the hiring for Department of Corrections, he wanted to talk to everybody, didn't care what age, he wanted to talk to everybody about getting a job with Department of Corrections. I know that Ricky would do well in our district, and I ask you guys to take a second chance to think about my brother. He has worked hard for this. He has used his own money when it came to come to campaigning, and I just feel like in my heart, even though that's my brother, and he's much older than I am, I know for a fact that he would do the best for this community and for our district. He lives on Leslie Green, and I lives on Judy Green. He's been there thirty-plus years, and I've been there twenty-six years. And also, if you could get him in the spot, I know for a fact that he'll fix my dreams. Yes, we live in a water neighborhood, but I know for a fact that he would do what he's supposed to do. And if he doesn't do what he's supposed to do, he will be held accountable by none other than Alina Jernigan-Hollinger, his only baby sister. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Leonard Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilman. I've been a lifelong resident of Columbia County. I've lived here all my life, and for most of my life, I've lived in the city. Having run for political office six times, I would like to, for the council to consider that in their selection of the person who should fill the vacant position of Mr. Green. I know what it takes to run for political office. It is not an easy thing to do. It takes tremendous effort and commitment and just plain old hard work. And having heard that two of the people that you consider have won political office, to me and in my mind, I think they should be given consideration for that effort. It is not easy to even run for political office. It really does take some fortitude. It takes a commitment to community, a commitment to want to be involved in making things better for this community and for people. So I just don't think that's something that we need to take lightly. Whoever that you might consider, I ask you to weigh how much time and effort that they have put in and commitment to this community in running for political office. I think it's a great testament to their commitment and wanting to do the best for this community. Please take that in consideration.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Law.
Hello, my name is Sarah Law, and I wish to show my support of Ricky Jernigan. I've known him for fourteen years when I met him when I worked for the city of Lake City. And I know he's a hard worker, having worked in the prison system and career source, Florida Crown. He's very well-known and well-liked.
Thank you. Next is Regina Lee.
Good afternoon. My name is Regina Lee. I'm here on behalf of Ricky Jernigan for recommendation of District fourteen. I've been knowing Ricky about since I was sixteen years old. He's like a brother and a friend. I can't find a most genuine, honest, realist person. He's the same every time you see him, and I think that he would be a great person for this district because he likes to help people, and he meets people at their needs. And I just say thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jessica French.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica French. Let's start off with what are some important things individuals expect their city government to do? I have known Ricky Jernigan for over ten years, and in that time I have known Ricky, I have known him to be very dependable, confident, organized. He is inspirational, optimistic, and hardworking. Ricky is determined, and he's extremely motivated to help everyone that he comes in contact with. For instance, anytime I talk to him about furthering my education, he will go above and beyond and out of his way to help me find scholarships, grants, the career source, Florida Crown. Ricky takes his responsibilities seriously. I believe Ricky could help make strides towards helping to find a new police chief and a full-time city manager, especially with his experience in law enforcement with the Department of Corrections. I believe he is a great leader and a wonderful team member and would also help attract new industry. Ricky cares about our government, community, schools, churches, and businesses. Ricky wants to see everyone around him succeed. I believe we could benefit from having new political leaders in our office. We have to think about our future. Please consider Ricky Jernigan for City Council, District fourteen.
Thank you. Sylvester Warren.
Mr. Man, the council is best one, nine thirty northeast, Joe Coney. After hearing all these people come before me and speak so highly of Ricky, there's not much I can add to it, but will say that I'm very grateful to Ricky. He was extremely helpful, true testimony, true story, even though he's my relative. My son and I were going through a very difficult time of hardship, and I thought I had lost him to the world, if you will. And Ricky was one of the people who motivated me and told me that he's young, don't give up on him, that I'm willing to help. And so he said, "Trust me." Ricky took my son, got on the phone with the Department of Corrections, I think I shared this last time, and he got my son on a different track from wanting to smoke marijuana and be a gangster rapper to becoming a correction officer. And so it just goes to show you the type of person that Ricky is, not only about politics, not only about sports, not only about refereeing, but he actually care about people. He care about making sure that lives are changed. He cares about making sure that people are affected in positive ways. I think that if you look at the amount of times that he's run, why does he keep running? Because he keep wanting to serve. And if you find somebody that dedicated to service, why would you overlook him? Why would this council find anybody else more worthwhile than a person like Ricky Jernigan who actually want to be in that seat, who actually strive to be in that seat, who really strive to make a difference, not only in particular communities, but in the community as a whole? And I think that this council should look deep, not on my words, not on these words, but look at the character of the individual, look at the work that he's put in and say, "You know what? What could it hurt? How much worse could it be? Why not Ricky? It's just the right thing to do. He's fought for it, he's tried for it, and I think that it would be a missed opportunity for this board not to reach in their hearts and give Ricky an opportunity. Worst-case scenario, if Ricky isn't the right man for the job, even though he's done putting in all the hard work for it, let this district get in ten, eleven, twelve months till it's otherwise. But I think we have an opportunity right now to give a man a shot who's worked the hardest for the position. Thank you."
Thank you. Susan Adell.
Hi, Susan Adell, six twenty Southwest, Grandview Street, Lake City. Please let me start off by saying I'm in support of Ms. B. Coker for interim city councilperson, District fourteen. We, the people, do not want someone who is dishonest and corrupt. We do not support people who are agenda-driven with anti-progressive ideologies. We are not interested in people who are uncommitted to the community and to the job of the city council. We are not interested in novices who have shown little to no interest in the civic engagement who have not attended any of the council meetings. In contrast to that, we do want someone who is honest. The key characteristics for an elected official is their honesty in both actions and being intellectually honest with their approach to the issues. We want someone who's balanced. A councilperson is someone who is a representative of all the people, not a campaign of a special interest group or having a narrow perspective. We want someone who brings a balanced view. We want someone who is committed. Doing the right job requires a significant dedication of time and energy. Consistent constituents' relations, attending meetings, and reading voluminous amounts of material in preparation for the meetings are all part of the job. We want someone who is motivated. The primary motivation should be to serve the public interest. If this person is agenda-driven or power-hungry or captive to special interest agendas, he or she will not perform the duties with integrity and with a broader vision of what is in the interest of the overall community, not now or not for our future. We want a councilperson who is experienced. This person does have to have the experience and knowledge of the position, the governance of the local government, and the issues to be in order to be an effective councilperson. Everybody has life experiences that would lend to an interesting perspective to this council, but some people are more useful to the public than others. I believe B. Coker has all of the listed qualities to be a great councilperson. We want someone who knows the issues, who takes action and finds the resources. We want a councilperson that would ensure that the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons will be addressed and would eliminate all race and gender discrimination. Ms. Coker is not afraid to confront unjust federal, state, or local statutes and regulations. Ms. Coker is not afraid to confront unlawful discriminatory policies, procedures, and practices. And as you know, Ms. Coker is not afraid to confront unlawful misconduct by public officials, private individuals, or companies who threaten our community. Ms. Coker cannot achieve the goal of a prosperous, successful city alone. It will take a group of open-minded people to work with her for the young, emerging leaders of our community who want to be strong agents for social change. There's enough heartache and sorrow in this life without our adding to it through our own stubbornness, bitterness, and resentment. Do not hold grudges. Remember the facts. The facts are, you were misled about her character. Never miss out on a good person who could make our city better just because they have been a little difficult. The good ones are never easy to come by. Equality means a state being. Thank you very much, and please vote for B. in this position of councilperson, District fourteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Kamal Ashtey.
Okay, I'm not going to go over everything you guys have heard, what I've said about B. I don't even understand why we're here, because she was already, she was already elected, was done. The vote, everybody was here, we saw it, done. I don't even understand it. I don't know how it can be overturned or Mr. Douglas, that's a whole different story. That was behind, that was a little secret, behind the scenes, that even one of the councilmen was not in favor of. So, and I'm not saying anything against the rest of the people. That's, you know, I will say that I think that some of the people who have gotten up here and spoke about her, I'm not, I was intending on coming up here and going back at it, but they wouldn't like that, because that's not how she is. You guys know who I'm talking about, and you know what they said, and it's despicable, absolutely despicable. Some of these people get up here and talk, and they holler, and they scream. It is disgusting. I have never, in my life, seen, and I've watched, I don't, I haven't been to the county meetings, but I've watched them. I've never seen anybody act the way that these people act in here and get away with it. It is, and for you guys to sit there the way you do, and I, it's not, I'm not kidding to you, I'm just saying, you deserve respect. That's why you're sitting there. That's why you got elected. And then you're going to sit here and let these people talk to you the way they do? It's disgusting. Mr. Sampson had said that we needed, he was looking for somebody in finance. That's what Mr. Douglas was, was, he knew about finance. Okay? That's why you have five people. It's not just one person's decision. You discuss that among yourselves. That's like saying we're going to give Mr. Hill the checkbook and say, "Go at it." That's not how it does. That's why there are, each district is elected a person to support them. I'm going to go back to, I believe we need a woman on the, there's too many men up here. Okay? Sorry. That's just me. We've had them in the past, and they've done good. Ms. Moses, Ms. Lane, Ms. Betty Lane, oh my goodness. Let me tell you about her. She, I mean, and B. is the same way. She's not, she's not going to back down. She's going to fight for her district, she's going to fight for her people. She has already.
Thank you. Charles Morgan.
My name is Charles Morgan. I reside at one seven zero three Leslie Lynn in Lake City. I'm here tonight to offer my support for Ricky Jernigan for the interim appointment to District fourteen council seat. I just want to echo some of the things other people have said and heard about Ricky's character. He's a man with impeccable integrity and impeccable conduct. I don't need to go further about superlatives that other people have talked about. One thing I would like to add is some things that I haven't heard tonight that might be of use for you to know about Ricky, is thirty years as a senior manager in a state government agency has equipped him with some competencies that I know would be of use to the city council and would certainly represent us and the district and the broader city as well. He brings acumen in general management. He brings acumen in change management. He brings skills in resource allocation, financial management, decision-making, problem-solving, all of the type of management competencies that a senior leader would have. And I believe those things in particular will be of use to you in a collaborative manner. Ricky would work collaboratively with every member of the city council, with the mayor, with the city manager's office, while also representing the city and those of us in District fourteen. I would just commit him to you, and I would like to ask each of you for your vote tonight in support of Ricky for the seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jessica Hicks.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Hicks, and my address is two six five southeast Leam Loop, Lake City, Florida. Of course, I'm here on behalf of Ricky Jernigan. I feel very honored that he asked me to speak on his behalf. I actually met him twenty years ago when I moved from the big town of La Vo to Lake City. In banking, I was a new mom, you know, started banking, just graduated, so I, and walked the door is Mr. Jernigan. I did not know that that was going to lead into a twenty-year friendship, someone that has always been there, no matter what, never asked me for anything, always calls me, encourages me, not just myself, but my family. Many people are like, "My gosh, you know, you've been friends for twenty years," and a lot of people don't have friends that long. But I'm very honored that he, I guess, saw something in me, you know? He was like, "Hey, you know, you're having a bad day. He can make you smile. Anything he just knows, he can pick up on stuff like that." There are many words, especially, let me rephrase that, when you look at a person, I feel like you should look at a person's heart and their actions, because that's what we, in the end, we are all judged on by God, humans, everyone, our actions. So I would like to talk about the fruit of the spirit and the heart of the person, love, joy, peace, patience, kindness. Other words that describe Ricky would be loyal, loving, kind, caring, smart, compassionate, humble, honest, and very selfless. A friend loves at all times, Proverbs seventeen seventeen. I can most wholeheartedly say that Mr. Jernigan has done that the whole twenty years and continues every day to send me a Bible verse. Every morning, if I don't hear from him, I wonder, I'll text him and say, "Are you alive?" Because if I don't hear from him, something has happened. So, but it's just in knowing that, every day of him instilling these values in just myself, I can't imagine what he does for everyone else. So I was, I really prayed to the Lord because I said, "I really want a good Bible verse." And I was led to Proverbs twenty-nine four. "A godly leader who values justice is a great string and example to the people." So if other people have a voice, then I would most certainly vote for Mr. Jernigan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jenny Haslam.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Lake City City Council. My name is Jane Haslam, and I am here to speak to this council about the appointment of a qualified person to replace Mr. Green, who recently resigned from this position. I don't understand your confusion. I truly don't. When I read the article in the newspaper, I was amazed that you could be confused, because I've been here before. I've run for city council in Boca Raton, Florida. I've run for mayor, and I'll tell you, it's a tough job, but I was never seeing the council confused over an appointment. I really I really didn't. So, I'm here to tell you that the people of District 14 already told you what they wanted. Ricky came in second. If they didn't want him, he would've come in last, or whatever, you know? So, you have to, the people have always been the voter, and the people voted. And it's just like a backup at a quarterback at a football game, you know? They always have a backup. And at the, at the World Series, which I've watched, all those pitchers, they just fall in line, you know? And they know who's coming up next. So, I didn't, I didn't understand your confusion, because I thought that the District 4 gave their choice, and that choice was Ricky Jernigan, who placed second. And to Mr. Green, by the people's vote, not by a council vote or anybody else's vote, by the people's vote. And Ricky Jernigan has served his country. He served his state for 38 years as an officer in the criminal justice system, and he advanced in that system to lieutenants in the prison, officer-guard. And Ricky Jernigan knows his history. I mean, excuse me. And, and it's the, it's the people who live, he knows the people that live there, too. And you've heard all the other good things about him, and you see that he's dependable, he's compassionate, and he cares. So, I ask that this council appoint Ricky Jernigan to the position of interim councilman for the remainder of Mr. Green's term. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your respectful listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a blessed evening.
Next is Steve Smith.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Steve Smith. Sometimes history is kind to us. Sometimes history is good to us. History often moves in large, forceful terms, in moving countries, in moving cultures, in moving armies. Sometimes history moves men. Sometimes history moves one man. Sometimes history spits out the one man at the right time, with the right skills, it's just what we need, with the condition we find ourselves in. Steve Smith believes that Stephen Douglas is that man. Now, if I might, put my Chamber of Commerce badge on now, and speak as the Chair of the Government Affairs Council of the Chamber. And we're not in the business of endorsing any individual candidates, but we are in the business of advocating economic development and business growth. And whoever you choose tonight, I want you to think about who might be the one that will position this community, so that when the Jeff Bezos of the world look for a place to build a facility, might be happy to see the opportunities here in Lake City, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn O'Ball. Mr. Mayor, before Ms. Sykes started the clock, I want to ask a question. You said at the beginning of the meeting that there was one item on the agenda, and that item will be addressed during the public comment. In fact, there's three items on the agenda, three separate resolutions. Are you stating that there would not be public opportunity to speak to those resolutions? Right. Okay. I just wanna be sure, so everybody be on the same page. Mr. Mayor. My name is Glenn O'Ball, in 1056 Northeast Baskin Norris Drive. A man is one who stands before his demigods and put down their treasures and evil ways. He needs to look up to the rich, Mr. Mayor, not down on the poor. A man is tall, he couldn't be short, but he always placed guard, family, and public duty above unguarded self-sacrifice and private thinking. Given the testimony from the people you heard today, in my opinion, that Ricky Jernigan is such a man. I stand tonight before you to offer my unequivocal support for Mr. Jernigan, he didn't ask for it. And I'm just doing it because I think it's the right thing for you all to do. I agree with some of the other speakers. Ricky ran for this office on more than one occasion. He came in second. So, it just seems to me that he should be rewarded for his effort. We're talking about less than 10 months before the next election. Our personal fact that he can do enough harm, he can do a lot of good about unifying the council and bringing the community together. It's in the wrong message to a person that's interested in running for, not being appointed, but interested in running for office, that he or she won, time and time again, and come in second, and the person who won the seat resigned the seat with less than a year left in the term. It would seem to me that's a foul thing to do. Forget about it, the foul thing to do is to appoint Ricky Jernigan. Unless there's something wrong with him, unless you find something in his background that make him unqualified, he finds something in his background that he can't contribute to the benefit of this city, then I'm seeing all the choice. In my view, had you chosen Ricky Jernigan from the beginning, without, it really wasn't a ranking contest, without that going through that process, I don't think we'd be in this position we are today. But Ricky deserved a seat. Ricky deserved an opportunity to show that he can serve. And it would be a tragedy if we did not afford him that opportunity to do so. As the lady said earlier, the people spoke when they voted, not you, Mr. Mayor, not you, Mr. Hill, not you, Mr. Sampson, but the people of District 14 said, "We won't, Mr. Green." But the next majority of the people said, "We want Mr. Jernigan." So, I think he should be rewarded for his effort. I agree with the lady that sometimes I advocated for a woman being on the city council. In fact, I had the deep honor of being one of the votes that were cast for Ms. Lane, when she was appointed to the city council. In fact, if I remember correctly, it was Ms. Lane and late Mrs. Scott. There was only two people involved, two women, so I didn't have a choice. And if I had a choice, it still probably would've been Ms. Lane. But keep in mind, after she was appointed, Ms. Lane ran, and she won on two separate occasions. Mrs. Moses ran for the seat and won. So, I'm of the opinion that Ricky Jernigan would be the best choice in this community. As I said, a man is one who stands before his demigods and put down his treasures and evil ways. He needs to look up to the rich, not down on the poor. He's tall. You get the point. Ricky Jernigan.
Sean Hope.
Mayor, council members, thank you. When I first started watching this process, I thought how lucky we were to have four qualified citizens that would step up and try to take the reins of this seat. I don't know these people very well. To be honest, I probably know B. Faithful the best. And I find her to be of equal mind in confronting things that she sees as being poor management or poor features in society, or problems that we need to address. So, I think we end up on the same side of the tracks very often. I, I knew Mr. Jernigan just a little bit, and I was actually quite impressed with him, except for the fact that he's got some people here tonight, felons and people of ill repute that are asking for him. So, that, to me, draws a question. But, but the key thing that I want to confront today is, I'm gonna use a golf analogy. My wife has reminded me that when you're playing with friends, you can call a mulligan. You can actually have a do-over. You can, you can say, "Hey, I didn't like that last shot, so I wanna go ahead and get a second chance at it." But the truth is, when you're playing in the Masters, or when you're doing something at the level that you're doing, when you're governing a city of $60 million a year in expenditures, you have a bigger priority. You cannot just call a mulligan. And to the way that I see things, you fumbled once. When Mr. Douglas was appointed, it wasn't done correctly. You didn't have your votes out in front of everyone so that the sunshine laws were being obeyed. Then the last meeting you had, you appointed B. Faithful Coker, which was basically done correctly, but you didn't ratify it at that meeting, because you didn't have the foresense to prepare as you did tonight, three resolutions, so that you could've gone ahead and completed your act. Now you've come to the final hour, you've come to the last moment of the last day, and you want a mulligan, you want a do-over. And to me, I think that you guys are dangerously close to breaking the law. So, I would just ask that you do something tonight that we can all take home with confidence that you did correctly, that you did cohesively, and that you not take into account someone's alleged problems in their past. Mrs. Coker didn't ever get convicted of any felonies, but there are people in this room that are calling for councilpeople to be elected that have been convicted of felonies, so don't listen to them.
Ricky Jernigan.
I'll go left. Put it on, put it on.
Natalie Cato.
Good evening, council members, Attorney Cobreline and Clerk Sykes. My name is Natalie Cato. I am the attorney for B. Faithful Coker. Earlier this afternoon, as you all may be aware, we filed in Circuit Court a writ of mandamus compelling this body to exercise their ministerial duty and to seat Ms. Coker as a member of this council. For those not familiar, a writ of mandamus is a well-recognized legal remedy to require a public official to discharge their duty. And respectfully, I submit to you that that is the duty you have before you right now. For the record, that motion is still pending before the court, and we do intend to ask for a hearing on that motion tomorrow, but I am hopeful that we will not have to ask for that hearing, because that entire motion is based on this body's actions on October 26th, where you all motioned and properly approved Ms. Coker as the new council member from District 14. You may be aware, Clerk Sykes is aware, that on November 1st, Ms. Coker properly signed, notarized, and filed with Clerk Sykes her oath of office. And under a plain reading of the law, specifically your charter, that action of taking her oath, notarizing it, signing it, and handing it to the clerk is the only action that matters. That is basically the magic formula that vested her with the right as a council member. All you have to do is look to your charter, Article 5, Section 513, which says that every officer of the city shall, before entering upon the duties of his office, subscribe to an oath on an affirmation to be filed and kept in the office of the city clerk. That was the important action, was that filing. Anything else is strictly ceremonial and ministerial, including the resolution, which you should pass tonight. Beyond your own charter, the law in Florida is clear. The taking of that official oath is basically an indispensable ingredient. Some would say the magic ingredient, I would, that makes someone assume that office. There's a Supreme Court case, Tappy v. State, from 1955 in the Florida Supreme Court. That court held that the mere filing of that oath has such great weight that to virtually ignore its filing, as you are respectfully arguably doing by holding this meeting, would be, and doing anything other than passing the resolution to seat Ms. Coker, is capricious conduct. And so, I urge you not to do that. Therefore, I urge you to follow the plain language of your own charter, which is also supported in Florida statute and in the case law. Use this meeting to approve the resolution affirming B. Faithful Coker, who in the eyes of the law is already the council member from District 14. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. B. Cooper.
Good evening, Mr. Cobreline, Mr. Williams, and Audrey Sykes. I am sadly before you asking for your decision tonight to be to affirm what you've already decided to do. I am not getting ready to tell you that me being seated means that I'm going to agree with all of the council members on the decisions that will be made. What I am going to tell you is that I'm going to uphold the charter, the Florida State Constitution, and the United States Constitution. That's the commitment that I made. That's the oath that I signed and vowed with Audrey. I did so under penalty of perjury, knowing exactly what it was that I was stating. I don't know how we were railroaded into believing that a decision could be overturned by smear campaign that watched, you all allowed my children to watch, my community to watch, and you all sat and watched it. I do believe that we are at a point where either we're going to uphold the rules, have order in the quorum, and go back to conducting our business. Are we in trouble? I have been vocal and will remain vocal about the issues that are of concern to the citizens of Lake City. I am asking you not to allow us to leave out of the meeting tonight without making it very clear to the public, to the citizens, to your coworkers, that we have every intention of upholding the charter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, and last, is Ricky Jernigan.
Ms. Robinson, she wrote a letter to you. Right. That's her three minutes, not my three minutes. Right. Just want you guys to read it. You take the three minutes, and then I'll start. Want you to read it.
Go ahead.
You ready? All ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Ricky Jernigan, 17, 23, Southwest Leslie Glen, Lake City, Florida. Of course, I've ran for this office on several, several occasions for District 14. Of course, I came in second. And basically, what, all I wanna know is why. You know, the people of my community has said who they wanted for second place. So, all I wanna know is why. The voters, I don't wanna let them down, and I don't want you to let them down. It's not about Mr. Hill, it's not about the mayor, it's not about Mr. Sampson, or Mr. Jefferson. The people in that district said that I was in second place, and you read the numbers I gave you to know, and I don't understand why I will let the people down. You're not letting me down, you're letting people down. Okay? So, if I can ask that question to Mr. Jefferson and say, "Hi, why not Ricky Jernigan for District 14?" If he can give me the answer, I'll accept that and go on about my business. I'll ask Mr. Todd the same question. Why not Ricky Jernigan for that position? I'll accept that and go on about my business. Same thing about you, Mr. Hill and the mayor. Why not respect the voters? Because, again, it ain't about us, it's about them. You know, y'all know what's going on in the world, and nobody wants to vote anymore, really? You know? Because they don't think their vote counts. And that situation right here, you've seen it, and now I'm just asking you why. You heard all these people from my district, they spoke. You heard Mr. Ball and Mr. Warren, I'm this, I'm that. Okay, again, it's not about me, it's about the voters. So, if I can ask that question to Mr. Hill, why not Ricky Jernigan? If you can tell me that, I will take, I walk out the door, pick myself up, walk right out the door.
Well, I'd rather not. I'd rather you do your three minutes and then let us discuss.
Okay, what about you, Mayor? I can't, I can't ask you that question, is that what you're...
All right.
Don't ask a question, or you're not gonna give me an answer.
I'll give you an answer.
Okay. Mr. Todd, can I get an answer from you, sir? No?
No.
No? Mr. Jefferson?
Chair doesn't pay with that, I can't either.
Okay, I didn't know. He just said he wasn't gonna do it. I thought he didn't answer for anybody else. And again, Mayor, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. All I want to know is why not me? Just why? So, I'll just wait here for the 19, 18s... So, so I'll, I'll just wait here for the nineteen, eighteen, seventeen seconds to, to try to figure it out, and if somebody can tell me something, I, I mean, I really appreciate you guys, I mean, you guys are good, I love every one of you guys. I don't have, I love everybody in this, in this, in this forum right now. I don't have, I don't have a problem with anybody. So, that's why I just wanna know why. Okay? Hey, thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get into discussion action by council. I wanna thank the audience, I wanna thank the speakers for, by, by the time everybody considered, and the comments were directed in a positive manner, pretty much. So, I really appreciate that, it's refreshing.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. The court has issued an order this afternoon at 5:11. The primary judge recused, was recused, and a substituting judge, Judge Darren Jackson, issued an order granting a stay in the proceedings, finding that the petition filed today by Be Faithful Coker was legally sufficient to stay the proceedings and ordered the city to show cause within twenty days why the petition should not be granted. So, in other words, the court has told us to stop our proceedings and filling the vacant District 14 seat, and file a response to the action within twenty days instead of proceeding. So, at this time, I would encourage you to recess the meeting rather than adjourn it, and we'll come back at a later date on this side.
Okay, we'll be in recess till the court makes its ruling.
Do we need a motion on that, Fred?
Thank y'all for coming, thank y'all for your time.